I call to order the City of Pittsburgh Commission meeting. We'll start by having a flag salute. If you'll all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Being that we have a full house here, we would like to establish a four-minute rule for public input. With that, I'll ask whoever would like to speak to come forward, introduce themselves, and give us their address, please.
William Strength, 1515 Hampton Road here in Pittsburgh. I've really just got some questions based on the last meeting we were at in the Silverback Landing. Just go down through them, and I'm sure somebody will write them down. If not, I've got a copy here they can have so they can get the answers. One was at the last meeting, we brought up the fact that it was a pass by the planning and zoning on a short plat. And then the city manager asked the city engineer about that. He said, "Well, we went through it as Article 103 and 104." Well, afterwards, we asked the city for a copy of that checklist and comments, and we got that back per Public Works Director and Assistant Public Works Director, a checklist for plats does not exist. So how did they go through and review it? And what did they have for reviewing it? Because there was a lot of things missing on that plat and the preliminary plat. One of the things was it has a 25-foot front setback. The developer was originally asking for that, but he pulled it out of the Planning Commission. It was never voted on it. That plat is now going on up with only a 25-foot front setback when it still should be 30, along with all the other stormwater problems. And we asked about the stormwater, and we get this, "Oh, there's a coefficient of .5. If it's less than that, we don't have to do it by city ordinance." Well, I have talked to KDHE several times, and before I could even finish, they told me, "No, but we do. If it's over 10 acres, it's going to be disturbed, or the water's going to go into a common area. It requires a detention and retention facility." Then, on the stormwater procedure, I did talk to the city back in June, on June 26th, about Pittsburgh Highlands with no stormwater stuff out there whatsoever. I was told that they were going out to talk to them. I just went by there now. There is still none up. I did talk to one of the city officials. We could go Friday, and he said he was going back out that next Monday. And according to the ordinance, you can put a 10-day notice. You're going to stop construction. That will be Friday. If not, then I guess we'll have to contact EPA. But my question is, aren't NOIs required before you give a building permit? If not, if you have a builder that comes in and doesn't have an NOI, do they still get a building permit? Who reviews the SWPPP? Who does the site inspections? What are their qualifications? What are their standard forms that they use to do their inspections? And what are the procedures for the general public to voice a concern about stormwater issues? That's all I've got. Would you like a copy of this?
Bill? Yeah, I have a question. You talked about Pittsburgh Highlands and the stormwater. What are you talking about out there?
They have, first of all, the most simple thing is they don't even have their sign-up that they're supposed to have as part of the permit, stay and who to contact if there is a problem with stormwater and stuff. They are supposed to have either silt fences or other things to keep the water from running off. If you are on Atkins, the house that's right up against the road ditch right there, dirt just slopes right down into it. If it rains, it can erode and put the dirt right into that road ditch.
And who sets them regulations?
What's that?
Who says that we have to have that erosion control and silt?
It actually starts at the EPA. Then it goes down KDHE. And the key KDHE, City of Pittsburgh, is an M4S4 permit. And now they're the ones that's supposed to be responsible for reviewing and implementing and making sure it gets done.
Was that silt fencing installed when they first started the project?
I have no idea. I wasn't there.
Matt, do you know?
Can I have a list while I'm up here?
There it is.
Thanks, Matt.
Sorry. No, that's fine. Okay. Yes, Pittsburgh Highlands put in the silt fence and the stuff. And then as construction has went on, you know, that property has six houses on one side and the other, what is it, 14 on the other slopes into that ditch that comes through there. They put in a box culvert and those. Drains back into there. We did contact the contractor to stabilize. They've got the box culvert in, the riprap inside of there. The contractor went back in. He's got some silt fence. I asked him to use hay bales as he's trying to put the topsoil back around the properties and top dress back through there as he can. He kind of crosses that while it's dry. He's crossing on either side of the box culvert because they're trying to put the road across the box culvert at the time. So it's this chase-your-tail around during construction. So, yes, he had it in at the first. Circumstances during construction changed things around. And so getting with him, he was putting some straw bales that I said he could take out during the day, during dry conditions, put back, and try to keep that clean. We're trying to work with the contractor. He does have an NOI on that project.
They have to have that up continuously during the construction project, right?
Yeah, and some of the stuff that he does have, and even on some of it, it is back, and the grass has grown up around it.
How often do you inspect that to make sure that's still in place?
The inspection by the contractor is supposed to be every half-inch of rain or every 14 days by that part. We go out, we're working on the rest of these. I mean, the, through staff change over and some other stuff, we found some gaps in our deal. We've had, for the most part, everyone that's been to town has done what they were supposed to do, and we followed along. But whose job responsibility and where we have that? We are working that out. We are working with an engineering firm to get ourselves online. KDHE from the local office did do an audit over MS4 last year sometime. I can't remember what the date was, but they did do an audit over MS4. KDHE local office has been here a couple times in the last couple months, and they were here as recently as last Thursday. We are trying to address these issues. And where we have gaps, there are communities that we know. We're working for land disturbance permits and a few of those type of things so we get it right on our side and bring, make sure that we're up to what we're supposed to be on our ordinances to follow suit. And we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. I mean, the EPA has it. Johnson County has some good stuff to help pass through to the contractor and contractor education and checklist. We're working with, personally, I mean, I'm the one that signs MS4, so that's just what happens. But I am working with the building officials, in fact, we have a meeting on Thursday, to continue to update and review our processes and put those checklists into when we, when a building permit is issued, to checklist whether we have an NOI or whether there's a disturbance of more than an acre, and those things are in place, as well as training efforts for our building official staff. Because they're really the ones that go out and look at, I mean, our staff goes and we maintain and we do a lot of stuff, but they're the ones that go to the building sites, you know, and do those inspections. So we're working with them to put that in place, to come along.
I think you can answer his other questions personally without doing it here.
Okay.
I do have a question, Matt. You said KDHE's been here a couple times. Have we been cited, or is it just more education?
No, we are working with KDHE to get...
In partnership?
To partnership, too. I mean, they're here to help us. I mean, the EPA will bring enforcement actions if so deemed. But KDHE is working with us, you know, to educate us, make sure we're all on the same page, and we're still, you know, locally as far as the state level as well, too, to try and get there.
But to answer your question, Chuck, on the SWPPP, it is a moving thing. If they move a BMP, it's supposed to be changed on the drawings. If it's not, they're subject to fines on that. Johnson, you mentioned Johnson County. I know of a contractor in Johnson County who had everything perfect in the field, who did not have his BMP, his Swift plant updated. They fined him over $100,000. He managed to get it down to $55,000. He talks about EPA coming in. They hit KDOT on four projects. The fines were almost $4 million, somewhere around $4 million. They got a court decree. They got it down to under $500,000, and they had to do things. They will put teeth in it. Plus, there is civil and criminal reactions for falsifying documents, for neglect, and for intentional not doing these things.
You're really here to help protect us. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other questions for me while I'm up here?
No.
Thanks, Matt.
Anyone else?
I'm Bruce Mullin with Fifth Street Bar and Grill. And basically, just some basic comments today about, not comments, concerns, questions, about the common consumption area that should be voted on tonight. Basically, my understanding was, my call this morning, it was still being drafted. I got a copy at 2:39, so no opportunity for my attorney to review it. So I have no idea whether to embrace it or stand here and fight like heck to prevent it. There are a lot of questions in my mind. Again, it's a recommendation coming from the Downtown Advisory Committee, which, to my understanding and knowledge, didn't talk to anybody that might be directly affected by it again. And, you know, it talks about the downtown overlay area, which is huge. It's like 14th Street over to Pine, over to, what's the one on the east?
Euclid.
Euclid. Two blocks east of Broadway and down. And there's nothing in there that I've seen is basically my concerns. And there are more questions and concerns than complaints is it doesn't say you have to have a special permit to utilize it, special events such as that, but does it encompass the entire area? I pulled up the ABC rules and regs, you know, played with my yellow marker today, nothing else to do. So basically, it says, "A licensee has been approved by the ABC to participate in a common consumption area," which would be us, we're a licensee. "Any alcoholic liquor removed from its licensed premises must be placed in a mark, placed into or served in a container that displays that licensee's trade name or logo or their unifying mark." Well, the question becomes then, if they violate the boundaries, which according to the ABC has to be any common consumption area must be clearly marked as using a physical barrier or other apparent line of demarcation. Do the streets count for that? I don't know. But if they're carrying my cup out of Fifth Street and they cross that line, who's liable? Us, the permit holder? There's a lot of questions in my mind. We have to pay a fee. We have to get an additional license if there's an event going on and we want to participate. You know, I know there's one being planned for Block 22 Welcome, and found about that through the minutes of another meeting. And there's just a lot of stuff that I guess I have questions on, and I'll be, I guess my concern is, or what my hope is, that you at least table it till you can get some answers versus getting it several hours ago and then making a decision that could have some unwanted repercussions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So Bruce, just to clarify, what I hear you saying is that basically, what would be your liability? It comes down to your business's liability?
Potentially, yeah. It's, well, in the ABC, yeah.
I'm not being murky.
No, I understand completely. It says, "Common consumption area permit holders are liable for any and all violations that occur within the defined boundaries of the common consumption area subject to the permit." And it doesn't say, okay, if somebody wants to block off a block of that and have an event, does that cover, does that exclude those that are attached to that permit if you've got it? If they go outside of that area, am I liable or is the permit holder? There's just, you know, and I know City of Frontenac looked into this, and they said, "No way, Jose." So, and I'm not saying it's necessarily bad. It's just, again, awfully quick.
Okay.
I have a question, Bill. You said you got this email, and we have some other bars in that area. Do you have any idea if they've been notified of the action we might take tonight?
No.
So I'd like to know if they have the same similar questions you have.
I know that, I know one does because I went and talked to him. But, you know, they, I just saw it was on the agenda, and I said, "Hmm, time for more homework." So that's what I did.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else to speak to public input?
Hi, my name's Keith Kloster. I live at 1509 Dittner Place here in Pittsburgh. Bill asked you guys about the 25-foot setback, and you guys never did answer that. So are you guys going to correct that, or will that be on the building plans? Will they change that, or do we just, hey, this is whatever, this is Pittsburgh, Kansas, we just do whatever? I mean...
Pete might have an answer for you. Plat shows 30-foot setback.
It does now? Okay, it's been corrected. There we go. Okay. The other question is too, did we, Mickey, the builder, whatever his last name is, did us as a community look into his things that he built up in Kansas City at all? Is anybody here?
I never have.
Well, the city has.
Oh, great. So you guys heard of all the bad concerns about him up there? I've got a staff leaders coming to me.
I talked to the mayor and the city manager, and they both gave glowing references, so I didn't call them.
Well, a lot of city managers don't even want to be in their city. They're trying to move on, you know, kind of like ours. But it's so ridiculous, but this town doesn't follow up on the things that they need to be following up on. I mean, I know somebody who built in his addition. He built his house. Everybody there was complaining about it. The subdivision that he tied into just basically ruined it. And, I mean, by the next meeting, I'll have all these letters. I couldn't be here at the last one, had family problems. But I will have you all of these things from up in Kansas City. It's unbelievable how much he took advantage of that city, cutting down trees, and he got in trouble for that, so he planted locust trees. And that's the kind of guy you're dealing with, you know, thorns this long. It's just, it's very concerning. I know the housing addition's going to go there. Hey, my house is right there on the corner. Mine's the cheapest house in the neighborhood. It's going to, if you build, like you say, $250,000 to $400,000 homes, it's going to do nothing but raise my property value. It's hurting everybody else is what it's hurting, not mine. So, I mean, I should be all for it. I just want to make sure it's done right. And this isn't, this guy is just, I know you passed everything. It's just another concern that it's just very frustrating. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pete? Anyone else? Mark?
Mr. President, members of the board, my name's Mark Warner. I'm an attorney at 201 South Broadway in Pittsburgh. I'm here this evening on behalf of several local business owners to address item in the Special Presentations B regarding the Block 22 Parking Plan. I actually am here on behalf of Angels Care Health, Detman Insurance Agency, Dr. Mindy Garner, and SCK Interlocal 637. They've asked me to speak on their behalf regarding the proposed parking plan for Block 22 that you're going to consider this evening. They are all property owners in the block that includes Broadway to Pine and Fourth Street to Fifth Street, and all adjacent to parking lot number one. It's in your plan that you have in your itinerary for this evening. And they all utilize very significantly that parking lot as part of their businesses. They are all very concerned about the impact that the proposed parking plan for Block 22 will have on their businesses. They're not here to criticize the Block 22 project, per se, PSU officials, or city officials. But they believe that the comprehensive parking plan that is being proposed is going to have a significant impact on their customers, on their employees, on their property values. They believe that a comprehensive plan for the entire downtown area is needed, and not just this plan to block out a few spaces to accommodate Block 22. They're not satisfied with the proposal that is being presented to you this evening for your consideration. They believe that it's based upon insufficient study, that it does not adequately address the needs of all downtown property owners, that it only addresses the needs of a few. There has been inadequate communication with the affected business owners. There's been very little communication. There's a significant risk to the business owner's customers and to their employees in being able to access their businesses. A number of them have elderly and handicapped customers, patients, in the area, and there's a real concern about how those people are going to get to their businesses. They're concerned about the impact that parking restrictions are going to have on their property values. This is a real big concern that they have. They have often been in the business locations for anywhere from decades to 75 years and have utilized these parking locations for that period of time. And if you're going to start talking about restricting access to their businesses, you're talking about a public taking of private business assets. So this is a significant issue as well. And as important, there is a lack of enforcement, or could be a lack of enforcement of rules and restrictions on these lots and elsewhere downtown that is going to have a detrimental impact on their businesses. Because this is all based on self-reporting. There's no one going to be hired to go around and enforce these rules that's going to rely upon somebody who sees an infraction to call it in and have someone come out and write a ticket. And so by the time that the infraction is observed, the person may have left. If there's time restrictions on other locations, again, it's just going to be a fiasco in the downtown area. So we encourage you to look at the information sheets I'm going to hand out to you. It's going to show you the incredible impact that these businesses have, whether it's their employees or the people they bring in to utilize their business locations, their customer base that they have on just this one block. And if you take that and extrapolate that out to the blocks that are impacted by all of the parking that is going to be affected by this proposal, I would ask you to take a look at that and consider that in your consideration of this proposal. If you take away the parking spaces that are proposed by this plan, you restrict other uses in these parking lots, you're going to be creating a significant parking problem for all of downtown Pittsburgh. If you add another building to this block, which you did last meeting, I believe, with the development of the lot that was caused by the demolition of the East Building, you're going to add additional parking issues to parking lot number one. So it's just going to get worse. And that was not even factored into this parking proposal. So what are we asking you to do? We're asking you to not adopt this proposal this evening. It's too little, too soon. It's not been appropriately studied. We would ask you to direct staff to include the downtown businesses in all phases of the planning of this proposal, to preserve the harmony of the downtown business district and to preserve the investments that these private citizens have made in their businesses, in their customers, in their employees, and for our community. So with that, I'll hand out, if that's okay, the study sheets that they have prepared that shows you just exactly what significant impact they have on our community.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else for public input? Seeing none, I close public input. Thank you, Mark. I don't know, did I say at the outset that Jeremy is not here tonight, the mayor, because he's out working, and so I'm substituting for him? Nah, one's enough. Move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any deletions about the consent agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Roll call vote.
Aye. McNae?
Aye.
Mancho?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye. Consent agenda passed. Special Presentations, 2019 budget. Consider the 2019 city budget for adoption. A public hearing is scheduled for August the 14th, 2018, as prescribed by law, to be held in the City Commission Room located in the Law Enforcement Center at 201 North Pine at 5:30 for the purpose of hearing and answering questions relating to the 2019 budget. Take that action deemed appropriate.
Commissioners, so to catch you up on the timeline, the last meeting, we submitted the budget on behalf of the staff. Today is July 24th. The City Commission submitted budget is under discussion. The hope is that you'll take action today to approve it so we can publish it. I don't know, I think it runs on August 14th. We'll have a final public hearing after the publication deadline, and we'll hopefully adopt a 2019 budget so Jamie can make his responsibilities with the county clerk on August 25th. You've had it since the last meeting. You've worked on it extensively since working day, and I think that's been about three months. I think it's, there's a few highlights worth mentioning again that I think are highlights. I guess that's all relative. It's a $54 million budget. $12 million of that is reserves now, which is up considerably from six years ago. $7 million of that is transfers, so there's really a net operating budget. Expense-wise, we're about $35 million, which is on par with last year. So the only difference in the budget from year to year is the fact that we put almost $2 million into reserves. It does include a 1% cost-of-living adjustment for all the employees. It includes a 2% merit increase based on performance-based evaluations that we're currently doing six months, and then a final one at the end of the year. There is no property tax increase. And with that, Jamie's obviously sitting here ready to answer questions. The book's in front of you, and we're hoping to get a move forward so Jamie can continue on with this timeline.
Any questions for Jamie?
Yeah, I have a question. I see that we want to add a financial analysis position. What is that?
Financial analyst?
Analyst. I pronounced it wrong.
Analyze financial data for us as needed.
With who?
Existing staff to fill in as needed.
So this is something that you're not capable of doing as the Finance Director or Assistant Finance Director?
I'd say it's something that's critical with the fact that Jamie's served 37 years here with the City of Pittsburgh, and can retire at any time. And the nature is, he's got to have a staff that he can download what he knows and how he does it because right now, he's kind of been a one-man machine and working Saturdays and evenings to knock it out. And as desperately as we've pleaded with him to train other people to do it, it's still not getting done because the other people are busy doing the necessary financial roles and responsibilities of the city with $54 million. So this is an attempt to, he's been very patient since I've been here, to get him the staff he needs so he can actually download this. Because when we lose Jamie, and that will be sometime, I would say, within the next three years, we are going to be at the mercy of the person that he downloaded that information to. So this is a critical position. I think it's, it would be unfair to say that Jamie's not capable of doing anything because quite frankly, Jamie has carried the burden for this city financially for 20 years.
I never said he wasn't capable. I just asked if he could do it. Go ahead.
So thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
I think this is an opportunity that you have to take somebody like Jamie and have them train the right person to do the job the correct way, which is the way that Jamie does, where we get perfect audits. We get glowing marks for all of our financial management across the city, including our HUD programs and our federal programs. And I look forward to Jamie's not being in there on the weekends and every evening, cranking this stuff out on his own, so...
So Jamie, what are your FTEs in your department?
My FTE? Currently, I've got a three and a half in customer service.
But finance?
On the finance side, I've got, there's me.
$54 million. And then, so this is part of succession planning?
So is that a department head-level position?
No.
You what?
Analyst usually isn't.
Oh, okay. Well, I was asking Jamie to go ahead.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
I second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Budget passed.
Good job, Jamie.
As a business owner, I am, past business owner, this succession thing is highly important for a job that you deal with, Jamie. And I'm glad to see that we're training somebody. Consider the following, Block 22 Parking Plan. Consider the parking plan designed for Block 22. Consider the parking plan designed for block twenty-two. Approve or disapprove of the block twenty-two parking plan.
Commissioners, Quentin and Britten have worked extremely hard to pull together a parking plan. I think we want to get to as many questions that Mr. Warner and others have brought up over the past, specifically the last two weeks, but really over the last two years. I think the easiest thing to do would, to be listen to this. And then, I don't write as fast as Henry, but I wrote pretty quick. Hopefully get to as many questions and concerns. All are very valid. This is a very impactful part of growing downtown. When you inherit the public spaces that you have, and you try to grow business, there's always going to be a rub. So with that, I'll turn it over to Quentin and Britten, and then we'll definitely get to as many questions as we can.
Good evening, Commissioners. Anytime, feel free to ask any questions, but we'll go ahead and get rolling. Today, we're here to present not only the block twenty-two plan, but also our plan for the management of a shared asset, which is parking, primarily in the downtown overlay district. When looking at the downtown overlay district comprehensively, it is a zone. It runs north and south from Kansas Street to Fourteenth Street, and east and west from Pine Street to Elm Street. It also encompasses all of the parcels that touch those boundaries, which is why you don't see straight lines on the map to the right. And then it also includes four hundred and thirteen parcels. And it's a mix of commercial, industrial, educational, governmental. It's a very diverse part of our town.
Britten, can you take one second? Is everybody here and her okay?
How about now?
Next question is, is there anything we can do about that from that closet in the back of the room? Just try to-
Project.
Just try to project.
Okay.
I'm sure the people at home are picking you up well, but there's also, you know, so many people here that we want to make sure that they're not getting lost in it. Thanks, Britten.
You're welcome.
Here we go, hold on.
I'm sorry.
You're fine? Hold on, dear.
How about now? Is that better?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Britten.
All right. So when looking at the issue of parking, it's important to recognize that this is not an issue unique to Pittsburgh. In any high-density commercial area, it is a concern, and one that is recognized by several communities. One issue that we do see, on our side especially, is educating the public on available parking beyond street-side parking. So identifying those lots that are in the downtown overlay district, and making that known to community members of where they can park beyond what they see when they drive down Broadway. It's also important to recognize that the city is doing, is making very intentional efforts to increase the parking available to the downtown. We're doing that right now as we speak. Joe Beeman and his crews have been out since July ninth, restriping and repaving lots, and grasping any parking space they can. And we'll talk about some of the ones that they've been able to add in the past two weeks. You've seen the acquisition of the Best Parking Lot, which added forty new spaces to the city's inventory, as well as, we're moving the housing office September first. So in September, the housing office that currently operates will be torn down, and parking will be made there in that lot, which will add roughly fourteen new spots. And then we've also, through reconfiguring, as I was saying previously, have obtained ten spots as of now. And we anticipate that number to grow as Joe and his crews continue through the downtown overlay area. Just one moment.
It's up.
Okay. And so as I said, addressing the city lots in the downtown overlay district, we looked at those. There are ten lots. We have our lot numbers, the location, and the number of stalls currently in each of those lots. These are city-owned and maintained lots. When you add all of these numbers together, you have five hundred and forty-four city-owned and maintained parking stalls and lots.
Now, this does not cover on-street parking?
No, but the next slide will.
Okay.
We want to take it one step further. So when we addressed the on-street parking as well, we had over sixteen hundred available parking spots in the downtown overlay district. We want to take it even one step further and look at privately-owned parking spots. We consider privately-owned parking spots anything that is owned and maintained by an entity other than the city. There are over two thousand of those spots. When you add those numbers together, we have over thirty-seven hundred available parking spaces in the downtown overlay district.
Could you go back to all the parking lots? Because I don't think all of those were on our, in our packet.
No, in the packet, it primarily focuses on the affected areas of the block twenty-two parking plan. This was just, we wanted to give a comprehensive overview of all of the parking available in the downtown overlay district.
On your study, I see you sent out two hundred and twenty-four emails to, who was that to?
That was conducted with, by, I am assuming you're referring to the parking study completed by PSU. Jay may be able to speak to that more than I can.
Who's Jay?
Yeah, that was the, we sent that email out to a list of downtown merchants that we had, and residents that we had at the time.
So when I heard Mark talk about some of these visions that didn't get this study, how do you answer that?
I think that what happened in those, in that case, was that the contact information was either out of date, or was not on that list that we sent to PSU.
Well, what did you do to follow up to find out if that was the case?
We didn't do anything.
So you sent out two hundred and twenty-four emails, and this says you got forty responses back? Were them from downtown businesses, or?
Mostly, yes.
And they didn't have an issue with the plan?
We were looking for information from them. What their time of day was, that they used the parking places, how many customers they had throughout the day, to kind of get a sense of what the demand was on the parking downtown.
Well, I see the back of this, they have some comments. And I think Mark kind of hit on some of them. And this is from the forty returned. I think parking is already a problem, and adding apartments and movies that will make it worse. Concerns about residents of new apartments using our parking. If you work on, well, this is good. When if you work or live on Broadway, you should be required to only park on the public parking lots, not spaces for customers. I agree with that, because businesses do count on places in front of their business, but they also use public parking for, you know, customers and doctor's offices and such.
Chuck, excuse me. Maybe we can let them have their-
Oh, sure, no problem. I can ask these questions.
And we'll have plenty of time afterwards, if you don't mind.
No problem.
By all means, ask questions as we go.
All right, I certainly will.
Plenty, yeah, for sure.
And in addressing that communication piece, though, moving forward, I do work closely with the downtown advisory board, and that has been a gap, the communication with the community members. And so something that they have requested of the city staff is to create a downtown comprehensive list that encompasses all of the businesses, because we haven't previously had that. And so moving forward, I'm actually in the process of obtaining all of the addresses of the parcels, all of the businesses that are in all of those buildings, and then creating a list of phone numbers and address, email addresses. But that will happen, and we will have a better idea of who to communicate with in those centers.
And on that note, just to answer to that, Britten is developing a plan to actually make a telephone call to each business in the downtown overlay district to make sure we have specific and proper contact information for those that are downtown.
Okay, go ahead.
So then, having completed a comprehensive look, this is what we're here for tonight, to approve or adopt this parking plan for block twenty-two, which is the area in question right now. Quentin can give a little background on that.
Yeah, so block twenty-two is a significant project downtown. It will bring new student residents downtown, a hundred new residents living downtown. Be roughly eight to ten commercial spaces in block twenty-two, three of those being restaurants, one being a coffee shop, one being a commercial retail business. So, so that, not just will there be a hundred students living downtown, there will also be several, several other things as well. The city and PSU agree together to restrict block twenty-two parking residents to specific spaces downtown. With a hundred spaces, the need to restrict was not necessarily for PSU, but actually to accommodate the downtown merchants currently in business. As you can imagine, if we would not restrict parking for block twenty-two, just like water, it'll take the path of least resistance. So as you can imagine, the closest parking spaces to these residents, I'm sure these students would prefer to park there. So with this plan, really it's to accommodate the downtown merchants, knowing that a hundred new residents will be moving downtown. And the city began planning these improvements for the block twenty-two parking in two thousand and sixteen, assessing the lots, assessing our inventory of lots, the lighting and security needs of moving these residents and businesses downtown, and then also identifying infrastructure improvements such as sidewalks and things like that.
So when the conversation began in two thousand and sixteen, as Quentin just mentioned, it did focus, it was an easy starting point to say, well, there's four city lots in those four blocks that are affected, put twenty-five in each. That was a good starting point for the conversation. But as we've mentioned and touched on throughout this presentation already, a lot of things have changed since then. And we'll talk about some of those changes as we progress through this presentation as well. When you look at these four affected lots, you see the city lots that are available in those blocks, and how many spaces are in each of those. The lot to the southeast was actually just repaved and restripped last week, and they were able to squeeze in six more spaces by reconfiguring that lot.
Is that the one, excuse me, is that the one behind Brenner's?
Yes, it is. And also, we're able to create motorcycle parking in an area that was not large enough for a vehicle to park in, but motorcycles could be put in as well. But it's not just those lots that are, those spots in the city lots that are available in those blocks, including public parking, so on the streets as well, you see the number increase of available parking in those four blocks alone. These numbers do not include privately-owned parking lots or anything across the street. This is just what is touching those blocks, and then the city-owned lots inside of them. That adds up to three hundred and seventy-one spaces that are publicly owned that are available in those four blocks alone.
So if we go to a breakdown of the city-owned lots, as you can see, the lot numbers are lot number one, two, three, five, and nine. Those are, those affected in the block twenty-two parking plan. So if you look at lot number one, located at Fifth and Pine, there are fifty-three stalls total. Fifteen of those will be designated to block twenty-two parking. Lot number two, Fifth and Locust, eighty-six stalls total. Twenty-six of those will be designated block twenty-two parking. Lot number three, Third and Locust, forty-six stalls total. Fifteen stalls plus one motorcycle parking space, just like what Britten said. That's not one motorcycle, that is a motorcycle space. So, and then lot number five, Fourth and Locust, forty-eight stalls total. Twenty-five of those will be designated block twenty-two. And lastly, lot number nine, the three hundred block in North Pine, forty-seven stalls total, eighteen block twenty-two. And if you notice here, there's five parking spaces. In the original plan, or concept, was four. What happened there, and Britten can speak a little more to this, we started looking, as she mentioned, Matt and Joe and their crew started repaving and restriping lots. We noticed we could get more out of parking spaces, we could reconfigure, and some new developments have happened with the Best Hotel since that first plan was brought up. It's became a much safer place, as the city addressed the public safety issue there. And so we decided we could go ahead and pick up some spots there for block twenty-two as well.
And charts like this don't often do me very good in understanding, so we do have some graphic images to help with the visualization of these plans. So lot number one at Fifth and Pine, you have Pine Street to the west, and then Broadway being the next available street to the east. And then you have Third Street to your south, and Fourth Street to the north. You'll also notice that in these plans, you, or Fifth Street to your north, I'm sorry, and Fourth Street to your south. I myself am confused. You'll notice in these plans, though, that the parking spaces for block twenty-two residents have been placed inside. That is to accommodate the businesses. So the closest parking spaces to the businesses that surround these parking lots are open for the consumers that come to their businesses, rather than the residents who will be walking to their apartments.
Britten, have we done a capacity, or have we done any spot checking to see how often these parking lots are full outside of like the Interlocal having a big meeting or something?
We have not. We'll talk about increased cameraization, will allow us to do that in the future, which is another initiative that has come along with this block twenty-two plan as well. But as a city, no, we have not. And looking at lot number two at Fifth and Locust, this is behind the Best Hotel, with Broadway being, it would be to the west, but at the top, and then Locust Street at the bottom. Again, you'll notice the twenty-six spaces, thirteen on either side on the interior of the parking lot, again, to accommodate the businesses surrounding that parking lot, so that those consumers have a closer walk to the businesses. Lot number three at Third and Locust, we just talked about this, the one behind Brenner Mortuary, with Third Street to the south and Locust Street to the east. We were able to get those fifteen spots on the far east side, and again, capture that unusable space for vehicle parking as motorcycle parking, which would be a sixteenth space on that.
I have a question on lot three. You enter off, what is that, Third Street? Used to exit onto Locust, out of the public parking lot. Now you exit onto Brenner's parking lot. How did that happen?
Matt Bacon would be, or Joe Beeman would be able to speak to that a little bit better. They asked me about the entrance and exit of the public parking lot of lot number three.
At Brenner's? So what we did, none of that matters. They're both entrances and exit out Brenner, and then we put the handicap stalls up closer to the northeast corner of Brenner's, closer to their entrance. They were over by the Fast and Old Side, and we kind of put them up there accessible. We were able to split it and put the, for the van accessible in between there. But the original angles on the Brenner parking lot were skewed. They weren't right, and so when we changed, it was a hundred-foot lot, and we were able to get the stalls and stretch them out. And then we did a double entrance and exit, and took the last one off the end there for an exit going through there.
So you exit on a private property off that parking lot?
We exit through there, yeah.
Is that legal? I mean, I know if it was my property, I probably would not appreciate that, but I don't know, I'm not here to speak for Brenner, but.
Would you appreciate those, that free parking lot that we've put in, paved, and keep there for your business on three hundred and sixty-five days a year?
Well, you know, Patrick, I guess I would, but my question would be to you. You are a business owner, if it was onto your parking lot, and your customers might have problem parking there, what's your thoughts on, being a former business owner, on this parking?
I'll do it when they get through with this.
All right, fine.
The other part of that was, is when you had the center curb, the curb blocks in the center, they were only designed for one way, but what you would have at a funeral, and just because we went through there one day, was people would park on the opposite side and try to make it four rows of parking as opposed to three, and you couldn't get a car through there as well, is some of that change. So, get everybody back. Can I, anything else?
Well, getting back on that, my concern is, and I know, Patrick, you brought up a good point, but when there's a funeral, and they line up cars to go out, you know, I don't know if they want cars interfering with their funeral procession.
Well, some of it was, is a lot of the funeral procession does go that, and they're able to better follow.
So they're happy with what the city's done?
I do not, I do not know the answer to that, Chuck.
All right.
Okay.
Looking at lot number five, at Fifth and Locust, just south of Lord Steiner, with Locust Street to the west and Fourth Street to your south. This was that lot that we talked about, that we didn't originally have in the plan, but as we continued to finalize things and look at the, look at the area as a whole, it was brought to our attention, why not use that lot? And as Quentin said, with the situations at the best being maintained, and it no longer being a question of danger or anything like that of public safety, we decided it would be an appropriate place to, again, spread the students out to minimize the impact of the residents coming to the downtown area. And so you'll see twenty-five stalls there, twelve to the top, or on the upper row, and thirteen on the bottom row. And then the final lot, lot number nine, the three hundred block North Pine, just right across the street from City Hall, you have Pine Street to the west, the alley to your east, Broadway would be the next available street to the east, and then you have- and then you have Third Street to your south and Fourth Street to the north. You'll see nine slots on either side of that lower row of parking to make 18 spots for Block 22 residents.
And enforcement was brought up earlier, and as you'll see here, there will be designated Block 22 parking stickers for the PSU students that are residents of Block 22. They will have those parking stickers in their windows. Obviously, we don't have the funding to hire a parking enforcement officer for Block 22. That would not be a good use of funds. But the enforcement will be complaint-driven, and if you have an issue with a Block 22 resident not parking in their parking spot, we ask that you call the PD admin line, and they will definitely contact PSU Police Department to come and take care of that. Also, you see Block 22 parking signs here. Those will be in the parking lot, helping to direct traffic and designate the Block 22 parking spots. Obviously, this is a new plan that we're going forward with here, and we will be evaluating as we go. Obviously, we'll learn more, as much as Britain, and Britain specifically, has put into this. We will definitely learn more as we go.
And then other questions that we've had along the way, transportation. It is a priority for the city to connect the South Broadway corridor, so from Fourth and Broadway to Cleveland and Broadway. Cleveland and Broadway is that intersection just right in front of Russ Hall. So we will have a C-Cap shuttle that runs Monday through Friday from 7:45 to 3:15. It's a community shuttle, it'll be a 15-minute loop, so it will connect that corridor for businesses, or business owners, business professionals, students, the community to use to close that gap. And then lastly, public safety. Some of the things I talked about even earlier, the cameras. High-definition cameras will be put in all of the affected lots, as well as increased lighting. So community members and residents feel safe using those lots in evening hours and at the night. And then again, the cameras being there. So if there were an altercation, a hit and run or anything like that, those are of high enough quality that we could get a license plate number off of that and would aid PD in that investigation as well. And then Quentin talked about our infrastructure improvements. So following the walking paths of the pedestrians that would be utilizing these lots and coming to Block 22, we'll be using crosswalks to connect from alley to alley, going across Fourth Street between Broadway and Locust, and between Broadway and Pine, so that they're able to go directly to the buildings as well, to minimize them from cutting across the street. And with that, that ends our presentation. We'll take any questions that you may have. Have a happy day after this.
I have several questions before the rest of you guys get into it, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thanks. So, one of the more legitimate concerns that the gentleman lawyer brought up were that some of the businesses, namely perhaps the doctor's office, might have disabled people. Are we taking any existing handicap spots, and are we creating any additional? I know Matt said that they moved some closer to the buildings, which I think is great, but maybe another word or two about just the handicap parking.
Ask me if we're taking any handicap parking spaces for Block 22?
No, we've got a...
Try to get in front of the mic so you can hear them. Thanks, man. I know, it's a small mic, there's three people.
No, the answer to that, and in fact, we're going to try and get the side street that are already signed and get those restripped on the pavement as well, to re-identify. You know, there's a lot of the downtown area that hasn't been striped, and one thing or another part of... But anyways, the answer to your question is, we have a list that runs with the ATA that has a ratio for number, including van accessible per stall that we watch for the parking lot, but we're going to try and refresh those, and including the side street parking as well, that are already signed, but we're going to refresh it with the paint on the asphalt as well, to make them more identifiable.
Great, thank you.
So do you... I'm sorry, go ahead, Sarah. I was just going to ask, because Lot 1 seems to be the issue tonight. How many handicap stalls are in there, do we know? Don't leave, Matt, this is all about you.
I do not. However many there are today, there's going to be the same amount or more if the ratio has changed since they were originally done. And I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
I have a question on Lot 1, since you're up there. Can the adjacent business owners there around that lot, can they, well, all the lots, 1, 2, 3, 5, and 9, can they reserve lots for their employees in these lots and any possible customers? And if so, how do they do that?
The answer to that is, that is not a recommendation that we're making at this time. I'd love to defer to Jay or bring up somebody, but I think the mic's out of space, we can't have anybody else up here. I think the general idea is the public parking spaces are prepared, maintained by the general public. There's 20,000 people in this city that pay taxes, and then more that pay sales tax. The idea that we are somehow going to solve this problem by identifying an individual space or spaces for individual businesses seems counterintuitive to the idea that if you live in Pittsburgh and you want to go downtown, there's going to be available public parking for you. Now, the one thing I can say, and I won't say we argued, but we went round and round this last week on this, because there are a handful of agreements already. Most of them, I think in Lot 1...
Only one agreement being Lot 1.
Is, in Lot...
Lot 9 is the other.
Lot 9, thank you. I don't know the lot numbers. I've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 businesses, organizations that I know of that currently have been in a situation where they either have an agreement that hasn't expired, which I think is one, and then the other ones have agreements that have expired, but they continue to get billed, and they continue to pay for those spots, and so we're going to honor that like we would grandfather anybody else that was in a situation like that. But the recommendation tonight is, that doesn't get us where we need to go, and so, going forward, we would not be entertaining any more agreements for individual parking per business, and we would definitely be revisiting the agreements that we have that currently are expired, that either need to be renewed or amended.
But... But a private lot, any business, if they have a private lot, they're free to put up a sign that says, "We will tow you," right? And free to do that?
Yeah, I mean, actually, to jump to another question that was asked, which was, I believe Mr. Warner said, there's another building that was just added to this block because of Commission accent a couple of meetings ago. The responsible thing to do is, anybody that's developing downtown should have to determine how they're going to have their customers and employees park. It's a different world than it was. God bless the interlocal. When they came down to downtown, from my understanding, there wasn't anything downtown. They were offered spaces as an enticement to get them to locate downtown Pittsburgh over somewhere else. And we've maintained that agreement with them, and we honor those eight spots. But going forward, now the demand has really changed. And so, I think the idea with the gentleman from Rise is that you're going to come up with a solution at your cost for parking in here. You won't be parking in public parking. I think he said eight townhomes, or whatever he was talking about, and the expectation is he's going to have parking spaces at his cost as part of that development plan. So that needs to be the conversation going forward, so we can move on from where we have been. And that's just a result of the economy changing. Good question.
I have a question for you, Darren. Last commission meeting, I did ask about parking and possible Block 22 spots reserved. And you said at that time that, not to your knowledge, that hadn't been done, and it wasn't approved. But then I get this, I think it's from the college on their email, I got this anyway, and this is from February 6, 2018. And I quote, "If you look at the aerial view of downtown Pittsburgh, you see four large parking lots within a block of Block 22, all set. We're going to reserve 25 spots in each of those lots for the students who live at Block 22." And they'd be marked. So I guess my question was, when I asked you last meeting, that you had no idea, but back in February, this was the plan. And I just wonder, was this the colleges and the city sitting down? Did they consider sitting down with some of the people that have concerns with their business? Did all three of these groups meet together and talk about parking concerns? And what, I'm confused if we didn't have a plan last week, but we have a plan this week. And I think if that was, and also, we're studying this topic from all angles. All time today, we're very confident in saying we're good to go. So I wonder, if we was good to go in February, why is it a month before they move in that we're talking about? It's why, I mean, it's something maybe if that was planned out in February. And it says, I think, in here somewhere, Sean Nacorado says, within, no, no, city official detailed commentary, transportation plan will be announced within the next few weeks. I'm thinking if we would have done that in the next few weeks in February, some of these questions might have been addressed by the business owners. But I think if you wait till a month before they move in, I think that's the issue that they have with their concerns with parking.
Commissioner, did you watch Britain's presentation? Because Britain answered your question. A month ago, there was a plan, and it was basically the same plan we had from March of 2016, when, you got, a day after you guys passed the Block 22 approval for the money, a group of us, the city planner, the public works director, the street and traffic manager, Jay, we walked this area. We went to every lot. The original idea from Becky was, let's just take the city lots and see if we can't carve out enough spaces to keep these people from taking over one lot. We have been working off of that plan, I think, for as long as we can remember. We sent a survey out, as incomplete it was, and I apologize for that, but, you know, I'd love to sit here and blame PSU, but it's, those are our parking lots, so that's on us. But just in the last 10 days, from the time you asked your question, and I think, I don't think, I know my answer was, it would be speculation. The reason I gave that answer was because that Friday, following the meeting Tuesday, where I gave you that answer, we were going to meet with PSU with their housing office about housing, the move-in date, and parking. And since that meeting, what we've found out was, we have identified close to 65 spaces with the addition of Matt's striping effort and reconfiguring parking lots, with the idea that a map that we have looked at for two years, suddenly, we realized the Best is no longer a scary place to walk by for a college student, and so, the lot just to the east of it comes into play, and we can pick up 20, 25 spots. The reason I gave you that answer is because until today, until we present this, and I think most people can understand, we were still tweaking this week. I've met with Commissioner O'Brien on that. It wasn't final. So, to jump off on a bunny trail in a meeting that was already two and a half hours to talk about something that, quite frankly, I had never seen the final recommendation, and had never had a chance to offer my changes to it, is why I gave you the answer I gave you. So if that was inadequate, I think it was appropriate. It was cautioned by me, because Pitt State went out, actually, after that meeting, and you know, sometimes I wish that I had a little more influence at Pitt State, because they published the map with four parking lots that Friday. And we scrambled, because I believe Mr. Warner, in trying to serve his clients, was provided that map. And so we had to go back and say, guys, until we take it to the city commission, these are city parking lots. I know this is PSU business, but those are our spaces. And that's one of the challenges of working with partners, especially ones as large as Pitt State. But, yeah, I stand by my answer to you. It was, it would have been speculative, because so much has happened just in the last 10 days to improve the situation.
I'd take that, but in February, it was the same thing, same answer?
It goes back to November of 2016, Chuck. We've had a plan that we've been working on. And in February of whatever you're saying, the Best was a wreck. And that lot that was east of the Best wasn't in play. And so that meant there was 25 more spaces in Lot 1, and probably 20, or 25 total in Lot 1 and 9. Now they're both down to 15. That's an improvement. But the reality is, and we've said a lot of things tonight, if we don't have a plan, and this isn't a plan to accommodate PSU students, this is a plan to reel them in and tell them, you have to park here. Because if we don't, and I know a lot of people want us to do a comprehensive plan, and, you know, I think probably at this time next year, in the budget recommendation, we will be screaming for a parking control officer. But to hire a person that gets benefits, it's probably going to make, cost us $60,000 a year based on something that hasn't happened yet, is not a solid recommendation by the staff. That's how we see it. So, we, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
But we can hash what happened in February, March, but I think it's in the benefit of everyone here that we just move forward and talk about what we're going to do from between now and August 22nd. Parking is never an absolute. It's always a moving target, as anybody who has a business knows. In your presentation that we got, you talk about reevaluation. Do you have a plan to monitor, and are there benchmarks that we'll be looking at so that we can be proactive and responsive to what we find once the students are there?
Yeah, that's really what the cameras were for, right? We want to, that, the cameras will give us the visual representation. We'll be able to do date, time stamps on various points throughout the year, to see how the traffic ebbs and flows. Traffic and parking is really kind of, has an organic component to it. It doesn't, it follows ups and downs and patterns, all right? And we have never done a comprehensive look at those sorts of things. And to be able to do that, you need something, some more technology to it.
And in addition to that as well, we're planning for worst-case scenarios. So if Block 22 is capacity, every semester we'll reevaluate, how many students do you have living there? And how many of them have cars? We're looking to make that more efficient, so we have that information sooner, so that we can plan for how many students are there. So if we can get three lots, three spots back, because there's only 96 students living there, then we'll do that. So that's another part of that reevaluation semesterally.
I have a couple more questions on parking. I'd like to hear from Mr. Ward. Are you all right with the city of Pittsburgh using your private parking lot as an exit?
Well, first of all, I know this, and I do it too, beat the city up, but I do want to thank you for the parking lot.
You should. It looks beautiful.
I want to thank you for the sidewalk. We've had to thank you for the alley that's been needed to be done for 25 years. So I do appreciate that, and a compliment to the city, and the employees were easy to work with.
Thanks, Steve.
So, let me go positive right off the bat. And I'm not going to go there. Chuck called me and talked to me, and I said, they're exiting on parking, onto my parking lot, which is private property. I said, I don't know how that's going to work. I said, we'll give it a chance and see how it's going to work. So maybe, maybe it works. I appreciate you.
Well, I appreciate you for offering that up.
And I'm not, I don't know how it's going to work. I have two other concerns. My, one of my real concerns is parking on Fourth Street. We have a number of people that use our front door, that just want to come in, sign, and leave. And they have not, in fairness, the workers have been, and that's another thing, they've been great. They picked up debris after they're off. They've been easy to work with. We asked them to move a truck, they've done that. But they have parked in front of the building. People don't like to go around. They like to just stop, get out, come in, sign the book, and leave. That's a concern.
So they're going to be gone and...
No.
Well, just...
Student parking. Who's going to park there?
Right.
And so if we're not going to enforce, I understand not enforcing the lot. I could, that'd be pretty hard, but we got a sign there that says, "Two-hour parking," or whatever, "No parking after 2," so are we going to...
The entire, correct me if I'm wrong, the entire downtown Overly district is two-hour parking. I don't know if a lot of, I don't know a lot, well, that's the whole point. I think enforcement's about to become a more real issue than it's ever been, and I think that's going to be on us.
Well, I mean, if we're a year away with the budget to get it enforced, I mean, as an officer, I mean, we've called.
But we don't do everything through the budget. If we need an officer, I think the main thing is, we have cameras now, and as crazy as it sounds, you can give a ticket.
You tell me where that camera's at, I'd like to...
There's a lot of them, and they can tell you exactly where they are, but that's the point of them. And they can be used for enforcement, but right now, we're just going with, it's complaint. You see it, call it, we'll move on it.
Not me personally, obviously, but we've set in this building since 1913. We have the lot behind us. It's always empty. Homecoming, the doc gets a few patients in there. Now, we got the new church. I don't have any idea what they do on Sunday. Ball supply, generally a truck pulls in. There's not a problem. The parking lot, we use the parking lot at... Uh, the parking lot, we use the parking lot at, uh, where the Lord's Diner is. And that's empty all day long. It's got some cars on it now because I think there's still a few people on the bus that moved over there.
They get, they get a few cars at the shift from 5:30 to 7:30 PM.
And I'm sure Larry Field's Event Center will, would use, would use that lot. So, but it's empty all, it's always empty. There's no, there's nobody there. Uh, it's a hell of an improvement over what we've looked at for the last 20 years. Except when Henry was there, we get to see Henry walk by every now and then.
Thank you.
Those days are long gone. So anyway, uh, I understand their concerns. I think if I was on the other side of the street, I'd be, I'd be concerned. But I think we have, we don't have the businesses. You got two tapped pain people on that. He's, he's the field tonight and that's it. You know, so anyway, I just wanted to say thanks.
Can we try it for a while and if we need to?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, you know.
Thank you, Steve.
I figured my kid told him he could do it.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
I have one more question on parking. Not from you, Steve, but, uh, there's been a concern with the doctor's office that maybe, could there be a short-term parking uh, in front of her off, office, uh, that, you know, sometimes patients need to be dropped off or picked up and, you know, they're not, maybe might be in a wheelchair or a walker? Is there some way we can designate that for her?
I'm, I'm sure that, I'm, I'm sure that that's not off the table to, to investigate further. Um, I, I don't know that we could, but...
When can we have an answer on that? I mean, it, uh, it's a major concern.
Maybe we should see if there's a need.
Yeah.
Okay, well, there was a need. I mean, she, that's one of the things that I've heard that, uh, their concerns are, so evidently there is a need for that, so...
So do Dr. Gardner's patients enter from the front or the, off of Lot 1? From the front?
One more.
Yeah. And then angels, um, what, I don't, where, what block are you on, Gary?
On Fourth Street.
On Fourth Street, okay.
So you have the same issues?
He's in Lloyd's old building.
Oh, okay.
You might have some, uh, short-term drop-off or pickup that you would like?
On Fourth, but on Fourth Street, there's usually...
There is?
Lots of construction, but usually it's parking in the neighborhood.
So to answer Dr. Gardner's question, there was a need, I need, I knew that came up. So I don't know what the answer is tonight.
Well, it's a concern. I mean, we don't know if there's a need until, until the students are there. Oh, she's here.
Then let her talk about it.
Yeah, I didn't see her, sorry.
Uh, yes, I serve a lot of elderly folks the last 15 years and, and of course, uh, Dittman Insurance is right beside me, very rapid in and out. Um, so I, I would really need some access to enter the front door of my facility. They see my, um, they, they receive their medical care and then they're, they, they leave within 20, 35 minutes. So what would be ideal, if I could have access to that front for that?
There's parking there now, correct?
Yes.
In front of your building?
There is, but I, I don't have any...
And on the side also.
I don't have any handicapped spots.
Okay. So...
The gap spots are over by the interlocal.
The interlocal, okay. So it's, so that's an issue outside of this Block 22 issue.
I think we can fix that with, pretty quick. I'm looking at the guys that can fix that unless they're saying, no, we can't fix that for some reason because we're out of paint. I mean, let's get that, we'll get that figured out for you, doctor.
Good, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Sarah, you would have questions. Did we let you finish?
No, but that's okay. I can wait. It's not that important of a question and you might not even be able to answer it. It might be a PSU question, um, but has there been considerations made for ample bicycle parking?
That as a part of the developer's plan to accommodate bicycle parking on his end.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, my turn?
Yes, go.
This is, first of all, I think we have to be aware, this is a good issue to have to be talking about. I mean, uh, like the interlocal, when it came to town, we were wide open, you know? Uh, things are moving and you can't advance without careful consideration and some uncomfortable, uh, moments. I was a downtown merchant for 48 years. I'm aware of the importance of parking. As a merchant, we mandated that our employees park a block off of Broadway. We didn't have any issue with that. Hearing the concerns of these businesses, I took this last two weeks and did a very informal, casual survey. Uh, as I, uh, came to town or, uh, made a special trip during the days, and I came down during business hours, during the five-day work week. I counted the open spaces on Pine, the 400 block and the 500 block. I also counted the West Second Hundred block in front of the City Hall. Never once did I see less than 29 spaces open in those blocks. And usually it was more than 40, and if not more than 40, it was way more than 30. I understand your issues, your concerns, but I think that perhaps we're crying before we get hurt. That doesn't mean that we don't need to continue to study this and watch it and all of those things. The city is, is, uh, they're, they're focused on getting these students in. And let's face it, the student population pays a lot of our bills in Pittsburgh, Kansas. That's why PSU is why we are here partially in being as successful as we are. And, uh, if it's a little bit of an, of, of a, uh, an accommodation to deal with these students at the outset, let's do it and let's show them that, that we like having them here. Uh, we want to be good partners with them. Nobody's saying this parking situation is 100% perfect. But it's a good place to start and we will continue to change it as we move forward, as we see the need. I mean, who the hell thought there would be that many parking spaces right next to Dr. Gardner's, uh, office, right next to Dittman's, uh, right next to the interlocal? I couldn't believe it when I counted them over two weeks during business hours, that there were that many unoccupied spots. So I, I mean, uh, maybe somebody else can get a different count. But the number of times that I drove up and down that, unlucky, I didn't have a rec counting the damn spaces. But I thank God I didn't. But anyway, I think we need to, uh, relax, enjoy our prosperity and work with the students, work with the city, work with these businesses and see if we can't make this work. I mean, we all, you've heard it a number of times, this is the first plan, not the first, well, the, the first plan that we're going to, uh, okay here or not. And, uh, it's going to change as we go through. And I think we just need to relax and, and, uh, work with everybody. Uh, make sure that none of us who are, who are business owners are parking in front of their doors. That was an issue all of my life downtown. And we sure as heck didn't have our employees parking within 10 steps of their back door. And I did another survey, as long as I'm on the roll. I went to a number of different businesses who pay their, pay for their own parking lots. They pay for their land, they pay for the paving, they pay for their taxes, they pay for their liability. None of them have their employees parking anywhere close to the front door. Ron's, Wendy's, Home Depot, I mean, you can just go on and on. None of them do. So I think that, uh, maybe convenient has a broad definition.
Patrick, when you did your survey, did you talk to any of the businesses with their concerns about...
I was lucky to be driving down the street.
So I take it you didn't talk to them?
Correct, I did not. I mean, I thought their issue was parking and I was looking at it.
Well, I know, you know, I appreciate what you've said in your survey, uh, that you've done. Like that took some time, but you know, uh, there's been times that, my concern is, we want businesses to thrive and parking is a very large concern for them. And I've talked to them about it and, you know, I, I can see sometimes in the future, if it becomes too much of an issue and maybe somebody wants to go to this little shop downtown. But if they circle the block two or three times, there's no parking place, then they're going to go to Walmart or they're going to go to the mall where they can park and buy something. So I wonder what that impact of the parking has on these businesses. And I'm still concerned with this survey, that a glitch or something happened, that none of these businesses got this survey so you could get their input on it. So in my, my recommendation tonight would be to table this until we have a chance to hear from these businesses. Set down with Pitt State and the city and the businesses and see what some of the issues are, are, are going to be. So I, I would make a motion that we table this issue for tonight. Uh, we've got plenty of time before, uh, the move-in of the college, so that's my motion.
Do I hear a second? No second.
I'm, uh, a little confused how we are, um, going from allocating parking spots in the lots to PSU to the front door, street parking. Um, if the students are allocated to the lots, is your logic that people who normally park in the lots are going to be parking in front of the businesses?
No, I'm, my logic is that we've allocated parking spots for college students.
In the lots, not on the street.
And we're not going to enforce that they park there. Uh, we've got, I, what is it, 100 rooms, beds, whatever it is, Block 22? And we're going to allow parking for 100 students. But my issue is, what if them students have 100 friends all at the same time that want to spend the night with them? Where are they going to park?
Well, these businesses won't be open at night.
Huh?
These businesses won't be open at night.
Oh, they won't? Oh, okay, all right.
I mean, do any of the people that you, that, that are, were here, that are higher marked, are any of those open at night?
I don't know.
Oh, come on.
That's a question, Patrick.
So, I, I mean, we can't do nothing tonight.
That's right.
And we, in less than a month, we have students coming. So maybe, um, a, a...
But why, why...
May I finish?
Go ahead.
Way forward was, would be for the city to come back with a plan to evaluate, um, some regular benchmarks. What are you going to do? What are you going to monitor? How are you going to monitor it? How are you going to check in with the businesses? Um, and in a pretty short period, we'll know probably September, October, if we have a problem. Um, and then we can sit down and address it. But we don't know we have a problem till we have a problem. We're kind of digging up snakes to kill them at this point.
I think that's a good, a good, a good plan, to come to have the city evaluate it, uh, quickly and come back to us.
Yeah. It's, it's our, our informal plan, as, as Britten mentioned in the presentation, to, uh, evaluate our, our parking plan uh, at semester to, to see how effective it was. As Jay mentioned, using the, the cameras that, that will be over the parking, uh, lots as well, so...
Well, I think it's, uh, uh, beyond the cameras, I think, uh, a survey of, uh, of, uh, the businesses should be involved in that.
Sure, and that is why, uh, we also mentioned that Britten is currently going through the, the downtown overlay district. If she does not have a, a, um, a solid contact for, for that, that business owner, she is making the phone call.
But I wouldn't wait till semester.
No, we won't.
We need to be responsive.
I know it looks like, I, I feel like it looks like we haven't been doing anything. We've been sitting around for two years. Quite frankly, we've been sitting around for two years. I, I mean, I think there's some real questions. If you've got 99 students that are signed up in Block 22, how hard is it to ask them, how many of them have cars? We may only need 75 spaces. How many of them are going to use the bike? How many of them are going to use the, um, the shuttle? The, that's, all that's information, round one this year, this all happened, we didn't get it. We're going to do better next year. But in the meantime, we know a lot right now. We know that we have a plan, whether anybody likes it or not. It's, it's city lots and we have spaces allocated. What we need to do in the next two months, and we won't wait till semester, is to get out there and find out when these students move in, how they behave, what they do. When I was a student and I had a parking pass, I parked wherever I wanted to. And if they got a ticket, I paid, I paid it at the end of the semester. Um, but you know, tickets are a lot more now and I wasn't a responsible student. I'm sure we're going to find out a lot about this 100 and how it affects, but we're not going to, we won't wait till, we can get right on this. We know everything now. Once the students move in, we can start walking it. We can, we have the resources to do just what you said, identify some metrics, get some data and give these, everybody that's been patient, as we have been, waiting to see this Block 22 thing happen. And the first question we got asked two and a half years ago is, where's everybody going to park? And I don't know one person on our staff that could, could give you a very good answer. We're waiting to get to that point, but we won't wait till semester. We will, we will heed that advice.
Can we set a date, like October 1st or October 15th?
Yeah, can we make sure Mark's question, I mean, the one thing I don't want to do is leave three questions unanswered tonight. So before you give me the big takeaway, can we make, I, I still don't see Mark.
He's right over there.
He's over here. Anyway, I just want to make sure that we've addressed to the extent that property values are a very hard thing for us to speak about, the impact. Um, I had, there's inadequate info, I think we've proven, um, you know, there's a timeline we're following. There's a reason it's coming out now. Uh, and, and I apologize if everybody feels like we stonewalled them for two years. But we had to wait for the thing to open and we had to find out how many people were going to be there. And we had to find out how many spaces we would actually have to put in the mix. Um, a comprehensive plan, you're kind of calling for an informal comprehensive plan. I think we may be in a, in a situation where we have to actually pay some experts. As much as I like Britten and Quentin, they have other jobs too. And, uh, maybe it's, maybe, you know, some of these things you reach out and you contract with somebody that knows this real well and can tell us what best practices should be. Um, an enforcement officer, we, I don't, I don't want to leave the impression that we have to have it in the budget in order to have one. If we need an enforcement officer, we will go out and hire an enforcement officer. But let's get through this first two months and just see, um, what happens. Um, add another building to this block, I think we addressed that. Uh, thankfully Steve Ward was here and talked about, um, exiting out through Brenner, the Brenner lot. Uh, if that's, I mean, if that becomes arduous or just doesn't work, I, I think it's a, I think it's a, you know how to get ahold of us and there's a curb cut and we can swing right back onto the street. And Mark, I, I know you said a lot more than that, but that's the, the things that I wrote down as fast as I could write.
I have one more question. We've heard from Steve Ward, we've heard from Dr. Gardner. I'd like to hear from Dittman Insurance of what their, my issues or concerns be.
Hi, I'm Nancy Bollinger with Dittman's and this is my husband, Kim.
Yeah, and I was going to say, and we, uh, operate Dittman Insurance there on Fifth Street. And just a couple of things, obviously we're pro PSU. She graduated there, our daughter goes to school there. We love Pittsburgh, we've lived here for her whole life, me for 31 years. And like I said, you know, support the community, pro-community, all that kind of thing. But just a couple of things that I guess are maybe disappointing from a business owner downtown. And maybe it's the same problem that Patrick had with his survey that's wrong with the original survey or a problem with the original survey is nobody taught to us, S E K Interlocal, or Dr. Gardner. And the process was not transparent. So let me give you an example of what kind of, what the problems are. And I appreciate that you went down there and you counted parking spaces, right, during... And I appreciate that you went down there and you counted parking spaces, right, during your time. That's awesome and I appreciate you serving on the commission, I really do. I wouldn't have the guts to do it and don't have the time. But anyway, when you go and look at that, if you don't talk to S E K Interlocal that couldn't be here tonight because they had to be out of town on business, you would realize that during the summer, they don't have their full workforce there. Between August and February, they ramp up, I believe it's twenty-four more full-time people that park there. But you don't know that unless you ask. And it was the same thing when whoever PSU or the city did their study. We reached out two years ago asking about parking and having it be an issue. And I don't have all the answers and I'm not gonna pretend that I do. But the thing is, when you've been in business for seventy years downtown, you would think at least, at the very minimum, a phone call. "We're doing a study for PSU parking, what do you think?" And I'm not saying we have all the answers. But like I said, the funny thing or the interesting thing is, we didn't get contacted or did, the email got missed out. BMO Bank, S E K Interlocal that has six hundred and some employees. It's gonna be easy for them to pick up and move, and I believe they mentioned that as a possibility, if the parking is an issue, cuz they'd have to have people come in and out. So you're talking about twenty-four full-time jobs, moving out of Pittsburgh, all the teachers that come there moving out of Pittsburgh. And like I said, I'm talking out of line cuz I'm talking for S E K. So I'm just telling you what they communicated to me. And like the doctor's office, I mean, she made an investment downtown when nobody else would, bought a dilapidated building and all that kinda stuff. And nobody even asked.
Never once.
Not once, and that's a disappointment.
I agree.
Like I said, you're gonna put those students downtown, that's fine. I hope it's awesome. I hope every restaurant works great, that's all great and stuff like that. But you would think at least, at the bare minimum, the city owed it to the downtown merchants to just get their opinion. Just hear them out, just ask. And there's numerous times where there's been emails sent by S E K Interlocal asking to get together. You know, they said, "No, we're meeting with PSU, you can't come," that kinda stuff. It's like, are you kidding me? I mean, really, that's disrespectful. The other thing is with the parking deal and the kids parking in those deals, everybody knows, all you gotta do is take the sticker off and you can park wherever you want. So I mean, that's, that's a cute idea to have a sticker and say you gotta park in that slot. But I mean, really, I mean, they're gonna park the closest place you can. So, but like I said, whatever you decide's awesome. Like I said, it's just a little bit disappointing, having a business, supporting the community, full-time employees, and you don't even get your voice heard at all. So, thank you.
I have to tell you that I, I agree one hundred percent with what you're saying about we dropped the ball, not contacting everybody as we should've. It's a mistake that we did. We're, we're trying to put a list together again. I know when I was in business, we had one of those lists and they, you know, they changed, they changed. And you have, you are absolutely right. We should've contacted all of the businesses. You're not wrong about that.
And don't you think parking is a huge part of this?
Sure it is.
Why in the world was it being decided one month prior to move-in?
It, it, it wasn't being decided one month.
It's been a discussion like months ago?
It's been going on.
For the city commission?
But I mean, to really
You just heard Darren say that that lot, by the best, basically just opened up. To open up some of these spaces behind you all.
And I also heard Darren last meeting on TV say, when asked by Chuck how many spots were in Lot 1, I have no idea.
That's because he didn't?
No idea?
And it would be a speculation. That's exactly what Darren said.
You didn't have an idea, you've never had an idea.
Kip.
Okay, well, but like I said, thanks for your time. Run it through and, like I said, I do appreciate the service and stuff.
I just have one other question because I know that they don't have anybody that can patrol, the city doesn't have the money to get a, whatever.
We haven't allocated it.
Right, as far as PSU goes, how do they monitor brown parking on campus? Do they have campus security?
Yeah.
Or campus police that go around?
Britton, can you speak to that?
Would they have any authority to come to the downtown district and do some monitoring?
Through the enforcement, so it's not just taking the stickers off. Those license plates are registered with that car and their account. So, as a student, if you get a ticket, you don't pay that, you don't get to enroll.
Right.
And you can't graduate. And so, that's a big deal with students and so, that would be it. So if there was a speculation that a student had even taken a sticker off, that could be called into PD Admin. They would verify that that car was there through the cameras. It would be sent to PSU, they would verify and that student would get a ticket.
So there will be campus police down in the downtown district reviewing this?
Yes, to enforce.
To, to enforce?
Campus PD will not be in the downtown district.
No, but any reporting to PSU, the consequences would be the same.
It goes from our PD department directly to theirs.
Okay.
And then who will monitor the cameras, I guess? Like they said, there's gonna be cameras taking pictures and all that kinda stuff. I mean, I've heard a lot of that information that there's gonna be.
Police department. Jay?
Yeah, that, those will all be, it'll all be recorded. We keep it for, we have various time frames where we keep that, usually about a month. And the people, the police department will have access to it, the people at PSU will have access.
Will these cameras be more advanced than the current ones?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, because we currently needed some security camera off the Memorial Hall and we couldn't get anything that was of any
Yeah, the cameras are looking at high definition. The key, the key, the high definition of a license plate.
Well, it would be interesting if PSU police could come down to monitor, to swing through the lots. Because it's okay for the, the brown parking stalls to be, cars to be parked in those stalls, but what if they're parked in the overflow stalls? I mean, that's okay? That's obviously okay?
No.
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 So you could, but I mean, like, you couldn't have a ninth car there with a brown sticker and that would be okay? Or not okay?
Are you asking a non-Block 22?
A non-Block 22.
Could it be treated as any other community member?
So, although like in Block, or City Lot 1, they'll have so many spots, but they can literally park anywhere in there.
If they have a PSU
You could have fifty people in that parking lot going to PSU.
Are they considered public members using that spot?
If, if a student with a brown permit that was not Block 22, they would be treated like a community member.
That's right.
Okay.
If they live at Block 22, they have a Block 22 sticker.
So they would be in their designated stall?
Hopefully.
Right, hopefully.
Like I said, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate your concern and we're not letting it go.
No, I agree.
If there's no further discussion on Block 22, do we have a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve. Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Patrick, can we move for a five-minute recess, please?
Sure. Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah. Why don't you, just for the, just for the record purposes?
Okay, okay, to have a five-minute recess.
Second, I guess, or aye, or whatever.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, yes, I can do that. Can you destroy your
I write it during the morning. It's a small s.
Well, they're the designated lots. Alright, so we got
Pitt State, that'll be you.
This.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
We'll reconvene the city commission meeting. Everyone like to take their seats. The next item on the agenda, exterior wall remediation. Consider staff recommendation to assist property owners with the remediation of exterior walls in the 100 block of West Fifth Street. Approve or disapprove staff recommendation and if approved authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the city.
City commissioners, as you recall, we demolished a building months ago on Fifth Street successfully. We did it rather quickly. I know a lot of people think it was expensive, but we did it rather quickly and most importantly protected the two buildings on either side of that lot. However, as you tear down buildings, you expose walls that weren't once exposed. And so now Bruce has gone out and taken a very reputable repair person, I guess would be the nicest way to say it, that's local and has an estimate for putting that wall into a protective condition where it's not going to deteriorate, it's not going to eat into his business and and thank you. Simply said quit leaking. So the staff's recommendation is that we would go 50/50 with them. It's not our wall, but it was caused obviously by the demolition. I know we've got a lot of money into the demolition already. We would recommend using demolition funds instead of the revolving loan fund in this case. That obviously comes at the expense of knocking some houses down, but we have a pretty good penny in there and I think it'd be the right thing to do. And I'm assuming at the next meeting, if we can get a positive vote today, as soon as Kip Bolinger gets an estimate for his wall, we'll bring the same thing to you. Bruce, do you have anything you want to add? Is that? The estimate is for $18,600. Our share would be $9,300 and that's our recommendation to you.
Move to approve.
I have a comment. Do what?
I said, go ahead.
Oh. First of all, I didn't approve giving you a blank check Darren to tear down that property in between Fifth Street and Dittman's. And so the $188,000, I don't know if that was low bid or no bid. What was that?
What was your question?
The $188,000, was that a low bid, no bid, or what was that?
Was your question, did they go out for bid?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe there was two, I was given two estimates. I don't know if there was a formal bid, I don't know, under an emergency, if they just took liberties with the emergency clause. I don't know. Dexter was just here, but he is not here, so.
And then I have an issue that we buy a building from a property owner that doesn't take the responsibility and take care of his property. And we have two businesses on both sides. It's been property owners that are responsible. And this, in my opinion, we missed an opportunity. Last commission meeting, we had an opportunity for economic development for the city of Pittsburgh by going with Fifth Street in that location. And Rise Development said that they were interested in another area of town that they would be interested. So I think we missed the opportunity for economic development. But my issue is, I think that whatever the cost is to put them buildings back, it wasn't their fault that somebody decided not to take care of their building. They've taken care of their buildings since they've owned them. I don't know what the other commissioners' thoughts are, but I would make a motion that, how do you come up with 50%? I would make a motion that we pay 100% of the cost that was incurred from one business not taking care of their business.
So there's already a motion on the table. I guess I can withdraw that motion if the other commissioners feel there's more discussion.
I don't have any more discussion. Sarah?
I guess what I would think the answer to that question is if we hadn't torn down that building and it would have fallen down itself, they would have had a heck of a lot more to pay to fix their walls. So I think that this seems fair and I would second Don's motion.
But if that would have happened and there had been damage to their wall from the other building collapsing, I think that business that owned the building, that caused the damage to their wall would be held responsible for 100% of that damage. So the city owns the lot. I still, I don't understand why we did that. I know it was said that all efforts to get them to do something was exhausted and I think one of the commissioners asked what were them efforts. We had to go to executive session to find out what the efforts was. We didn't do that. I think possibly if it was a safety issue and needed demolished, I thought maybe the city could go ahead and do that, but not take ownership of that property and somehow get that cost back from the owners of the property. But that's my opinion.
Okay, we have a motion before from Chuck and from Don. Don made the motion first. Do we have a second?
Yes, it's been seconded.
Been moved, huh?
She's seconded it.
Okay, been moved and seconded?
One point.
Yes, ma'am.
A little discussion. We had that discussion in open meeting Chuck where they explained that the resources from Yost were not legally obtainable. So we had, we heard from Henry on, in terms of why we were absorbing the cost for demolishing that building and why we could not recoup the money. And I suspect that if we had done nothing and the building had fallen down, that those two business owners would have still had the same issues that we had in recouping. You don't think so? You think there would have been insurance involved? Okay.
Okay, we can't have conversation from the floor. We have a motion and a second. We have a vote, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Been moved and passed. That the city will reimburse the two buildings for half of their repair. Moving on to item C. Ordinance number G-1282. Consider approval of ordinance number G-1282 establishing a common consumption area and authorizing the possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor within its boundaries. Approved or disapproved?
Commissioners, about the middle of last year, the state passed a statute that would allow for the creation of what they refer to as a common consumption area, which essentially allows people to purchase alcohol within a drinking establishment, a licensed drinking establishment, and to take it outside of that establishment within a defined area. Right? It's been something they'd been working on for a number of years. Finally got it passed last year. And the key was that, and the city of Pittsburgh is considering adopting that or taking advantage of that statute at this point. This ordinance is required to be able to create the common consumption area. And really the purpose of this is to facilitate the management of alcohol during events. Right? It takes, right now, when we have alcohol during events, you can obviously go into a bar and drink, you could always have been able to do that, but if you wanted to have it outside, in the midst of the event, you had to have a defined area, a beer garden, right? And it was typically managed by volunteers, people who were really not accustomed to managing that, to serving and controlling the distribution of that. This puts the responsibility for managing the alcohol on more professional, people who do this on a regular basis. And it provides pretty strict guidelines for how that should be done. The twist, one of the things that the statute did allow at the state level was for the individual communities to set up their own rules and regulations around how to manage a common consumption area. And in Pittsburgh, we already have a special event permitting process, which, so what we decided to do was to take a broad area to make it a common consumption area and then to require each instance of application of the common consumption statute to require a special event permit that we would manage through that special event process. So that is the twist on the, that we're at, that Pittsburgh's adding. That way we can control the traffic flows, we can very clearly beforehand see what the boundaries are and mark them off and have a management plan for how to deal with that event that is serving alcohol.
Is there some particular kind of border that we are requiring?
When we create the consumption area, we have to have some marking. It can be, it can actually be, you know, barricades, but it could also be a line on the ground that we could paint. So we do have to, we do have to add that. Now, in terms of the actual consumption area, right, we will, you know, our special event permit process will define what that has, what that barrier has to be for the drinking of that alcohol outside.
Is, do we need to take action on this tonight? Or as Mr. Mullins explained, kind of short notice for him to figure this all out? Is there a way that we could maybe give him time and maybe act on this at the next commission meeting?
The reason we're talking about tonight is we need, we needed to give enough time for this to happen at the art walk, which is on the 28th of August. And that's, that's the primary driver for the timing of this.
So who's monitoring the boundaries? When you say we?
It will, it will be the bars. The bars have to actually apply to participate in the common consumption event that we, that is there. And when they do that, they'll be responsible for monitoring.
So the Colonial Fox Theater is having an event and a beer garden. Well, does that fit into this or how?
A beer garden's been available for anybody for a long time, so they can, that isn't the same as the common consumption area. Beer garden is a different thing. This is a common consumption area that is, that is defined through state statutes that you can take drinks out of a bar into a, into a common area.
So, oh, I guess I'm confused. So if they apply for this, then anytime they're open, or it's just a special event? So if Fifth Street wanted to have a street dance, this would apply to that? This, this would be what they would apply for?
That's correct.
And their patrons could take out into the street alcohol in marked containers?
Correct.
And it's up to the bar owners to make sure that nobody inappropriately leaves or enters that boundary?
Bruce, is this enough explanation for you tonight?
What, what are you looking for?
Well, basically, you've got other issues that go along with it as far as I'm concerned. And I, I'm not necessarily saying it's a crazy idea, but when you say it's up to experts to monitor it, I mean, if you don't have it fenced in, how are you going to know if somebody decides to cut across the block and all of a sudden they're outside the consumption area and we're liable? We can't police every square inch of that area anytime you do anything of that nature. I, I just, I see it as an enforcement potential nightmare. The other thing that concerns me as a business owner, for now, every major event we have downtown, anybody can come along and apply for a hundred dollar permit and start slinging beer and liquor within the area.
So.
It's a hundred dollar permit that's good for a year from the ABC. I don't know what the city permit requirements are going to be, but to have it thrown out at 2:39 and then acted on tonight again? Sorry, the art walks existed for years without it. I don't know how it makes it that much better deal this year, so.
So really, if we were going to table this and do further study, it's really how do you contain, how do you contain the area? How do we protect?
Well, Jay says it's the bar owner's responsibility to maintain.
Let's say Colonial Fox is doing the beer garden and they're doing this event, then it's up to her, she was talking off the proposal, fourth block on Broadway? And you're going to be able to control every bit of that? And she's willing to accept that liability?
If she's willing to accept it.
They're liable for violence?
Commissioners, that's, 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 that's between, it's, it's the person that takes out, the entity that takes out the license that is required to police it.
Maybe, Henry can clarify.
And I'm not, I don't want to speak for the PD, but if someone leaves the, the boundary of the CCA with a alcoholic drink, that person's going to be cited for leaving the area with that drink. I mean, that's, that's pretty clear in the state statute. And I don't know, you know, Tim can, can back me up on this, but that's where I see the liability coming into for leaving the area with a, with an alcoholic drink is on the person carrying that drink.
It says right here in the ABC, common consumption area permit holders are liable for any and all violations that occur within the defined boundaries of the common consumption area.
And maybe, let me explain, that, that's, there is a little confusion there because we are, we would, the city would be the common consumption area permit holder, right? Then each bar would have to, have to submit a request to participate in this special event during that, during that timeframe. So we, the city is the actual common consumption area holder here, which means that the police would be responsible, would be the ones who would be enforcing the, they would, they would be the one looking at the legal status. Do you want to talk about that?
And commissioners, if I can maybe help clear this up a little bit, a lot of these events that we're talking about, we already have a police presence downtown. The Baja event that we held here a month or so ago, the art walks, we already have officers on foot in that area. This will, actually, we already patrol. If there's a beer garden downtown, we're already policing that. We're dealing with that. So what this does, it, it makes it a little more open and it makes it a little easier on us, quite frankly. If somebody is outside the boundaries with a bottle of beer or a can of beer, they're not part of that common consumption area. They're not part of this ordinance because they don't have the container, it's not logoed. We're going to take that enforcement action against an individual. If somebody sneaks a bottle of beer into a purse and walks out past a bouncer at a bar, I can't hold that bar responsible for that bottle of beer getting out there, but I sure can cite that individual for possessing and consuming out in a public place. This is not going to be any different, in our opinion. We're going to be policing these things just like we do now. It's going to open it up, it just makes it a little more easier to deal with, a little bit easier to address, and it actually can help the bars in terms of folks getting out. You know, they can walk into a bar, they can buy a drink if they want to go look at art, they pour it into the cup, they walk out. One of the things we talked about is, is maybe banding, putting on the paper bands so that we know they're part of that event. There's a lot of things that we can do to clean it up, but at the end of the day, it's just opening up this area and making it a little more enforceable.
So what you're saying is if Fifth Street wanted to do this and they had the boundaries and it's a special event, then the police department will have officers on scene, making sure nobody goes past the boundary or?
Around the area, yeah, sure. You know, if we're on bike patrol, for example, in the art walk, so we're, we're circling the whole boundary area. It just depends on the event.
So Bruce, with the city being responsible and the police maintaining the boundary, what, what's your thoughts on that?
I think it's an enforcement nightmare, but again, I haven't had a chance to have legal review or anything else. Like I said, one of my opening remarks, I don't know whether to embrace this or fight it like hell.
Yeah.
That's the situation.
Mike Feenan, I'm on the downtown advisory board. We've been working on this particular ordinance for the better part of eight months was when I started and they were working on it before I got there. This has been something that we've been looking at from all the angles. And one of the points that I want to be sure everybody knows, Bruce and everybody else, is that if any bar feels any pressure or risk or liability or anything that they don't want to take on, they don't have to be part of it. There's no obligation. If, if the pit decides they don't want to take part in, whether it's art walk, whether it's next time Baja's in town, anything that's going on downtown, all they have to do is say, we're not going to do it. That's part of the rationale behind the logos on the cups, is it makes it easy from an enforcement standpoint to know who is and is not participating in that event at that point. So if Pitt doesn't want to do it, then they just don't. If Fifth Street doesn't want to be a part, doesn't want to have special events, then they just don't. Nothing at all changes for them at that point. They go on just like they always have up until this day. What this does is it sets up those events for the future.
I can, I can see Bruce's concerns with this coming, and you said you've been working on this for eight months?
Yeah, I, my tenure on the board started in January and at my very first meeting, that was part of what was introduced to us and information PDFs, stuff from the state and everything. So it's been something that, and I want to apologize on behalf of the board as well. If you did not speak to anybody, that was an error on our part because we have talked to 505, I know, I know we've talked to the pit, I know that we've talked to TJ Leland's. I was looking through my notes as you were sitting there trying to find who talked to you and I don't have, I have.
Trust me, you won't find it.
I apologize for that. And so I came here, sitting here thinking that we had already caught everybody. If I had known we hadn't, I would have been the first one over there because it's important to me as a resident of the city. But at the end of the day, if, if anybody feels any discomfort towards taking part, then there's no obligation to do that. They can stand pat.
Other than from a competitive standpoint, when potentially everybody else is out enjoying it and doing it and you're sitting there going, well, crap. So, you know.
Well, I know it's explained tonight and I can understand, you know, Bruce's concerned that he wasn't notified with what was going on and just like the parking wasn't notified. People make mistakes. We, we try to fix them as we go and hopefully, I know this is short notice, I don't understand the reason for it, but I think you've explained it quite well and I, I don't, and I understand what Bruce is saying that, you know, why would he not want to be part of this and lose pot, potential revenue and taking part of it? But I think they've said that it's not on you, your responsibility to maintain that boundary. And if somebody goes outside the boundary, then nothing can be legally tied to any of these bars?
Commissioner, if I could just back up, and again, some of the, some of the rules that we wanted are in this ordinance. For example, we don't want glass bottles coming out in the streets. Obviously, it's a safety concern. So now, if, if I have a bar that's allowing that to happen, obviously there's a violation and we will address that, of course. But if, if they're carding, running their business just like they do tonight, then those issues we'll address on, on an individual basis. You know, if somebody takes, if somebody takes a drink out of, of their establishment, hands it off to somebody under 21, those are the people that we're going to cite. You know, the bar, once it leaves the bar, they don't have that control, we're going to address that just like we would any other night.
And that is in the Kansas state statute as well? That the licensee, the liquor licensees are only responsible for what happens on their premises.
Their place of business.
Their place of, thank you.
So should we pass this tonight? I guess I would ask that maybe not in the legalese, some kind of, you know, just guidelines are sent to bar owners and maybe some examples of how it would work and, you know, what, what they are responsible for and what they're not responsible for.
It's, it's one of the things that we talked about. I was invited to the downtown advisory board just to give the input from the police department. And, you know, that was one of the things that I keyed on is, is a lot of this is going to be public education. You know, for the longest time, we have, in, in Pittsburgh, we have a more restrictive requirement for bars than do other cities in the state of Kansas in that we don't allow folks under 21 into bars. This is going to take education, obviously. This is going to take education, obviously, and that's one of the things as these events go. I liken it to homecoming. You know, when PSU homecoming comes, everybody knows what's going to happen. They know Broadway's going to get blocked off at 5:00 in the morning, they know that traffic's going to be restricted till noon. These events will slowly, the education will take place and if we have to enforce, so be it. And that learning curve will take place and we hope that it'll, the education will replicate out and make these events a little better as we go.
Any other discussion?
Do you anticipate the first use of this, should we pass it tonight, is art walk? They're going to enact it?
It's going to take a while for all of, we have to submit it to the state.
Okay.
Then they have, the bar owners who are interested, who express interest will want, will make the applications as well, so it'll take a little while.
Do I have a motion? I move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else?
I have, I have one thing. It's been brought to my attention recently that I attended meetings of the Planning and Zoning Committee as well as a meeting at the library concerning Silverback Landing Development was because I had relatives that lived in East Hills inform me of these meetings. What is, what does it matter if I did have relatives live there that I went to these meetings, one of my questions? But I go further. I have no knowledge of any relatives that live there. I checked every address on every street in East Hills Development. The reason I attended these meetings, because I received a call from citizens, not relatives. I even asked my sister what relatives we had living there. So the reason I was attending these meetings, because residents asked me to attend the meetings and I thought I was doing my damn job as their city commissioner by attending these meetings. So Commissioner McNay, do you have any knowledge of any relative of mine that lived there?
Chuck, yes, I responded to an email that we got and they thanked you for going to all the meetings. It was my, it was my understanding you had a relative and I made the assumption that that's how you knew of those meetings. The rest of us were not notified. So the email implied that you chose not to go and I was simply explaining we weren't notified. So I apologize if you are offended because I thought you had relatives that lived there.
What would make you think I had relatives, Sarah?
I'd heard that.
From who?
You know what? I'm not going to get into this.
Okay, all right, that's, that's fair enough.
I apologize.
That's fair enough, that's fair enough. But since you apologized, I don't know if I accept that, but I will say, in the future, if anyone receives an email, a text, phone call, or handwritten letter from Commissioner McNay with information about me, please contact me so I can verify if it is factual.
Anything else? We're good on the staff side, okay? Moved to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Why didn't you just call me?
Why didn't you call me? Why didn't you call me? You're sending an email that I have relatives. You're implying that I'm...